Good evening.
You're on.
All right, good evening. We are at item number four, reconvene to open session for our regular meeting at six o'clock. My apologies. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harris, will you read us the pledge?
Please switch your right hand over to your heart.
[inaudible]
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 Okay.
Uh, that's very obvious.
Do you have a call up there?
Don't.
Yeah, he did.
No, what's the call up there?
Is that not removed?
Number five there.
Gary, please.
Probably doing on what?
Is that an accidental even? That's a place holder.
Yeah. Do you tell us from the...
Okay. All right. Item number six. Approval and adoption approval of the agenda, six point one, approval of the agenda for October ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I had a momentary lapse of wait minutes, I wasn't here, but agenda, getting ahead of myself. Item number seven, approval of the minute, seven point one, approval of the minutes of August twenty first, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved, wait.
Who wasn't here?
Yeah, who was here?
I wasn't here.
You were not here? I think it was my thing.
I can tell you.
Yes, they weren't here, so it's a...
I wasn't here on the twenty first.
Okay, so you two are gone, okay, so who moved?
Yes.
So moved, second.
Okay, there we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, finally got that one done. Um, seven point two, sorry, I had a screen reboot there, approval of the minutes of September twenty fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Is that the one I missed?
He missed.
Yes. So on that one, I got it. Everybody else is here, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go, my goodness, that has not happened to us in a long time. Item eight, special recognition reports and presentations, as I assume we may have some people in the room waiting on this. Eight point one, student reports to the board, students from McNear Elementary School and Valle Vista Elementary School will join the students, student representatives from Pelham Jr. High, Pelham Jr. High, to report on activities at their respective school sites. So why don't we just go in order and start with McNear, and there we go. Da, da, da.
Yeah, perfect.
So come on down, you'll address us, you can use that little podium thing, or you can put it on the floor, either one, up to you.
Or scoot it to the side and sit there. Ask any shall shoot this back. And let us know your names, and then you may present.
Hello, I'm James Dol.
Hi, I'm Scarlett Sanders.
And we are representing the McNear Falcons from McNear Elementary School.
Our principal from McNear Elementary is, uh, Liza Ikers.
We are going to be talking about grades and different projects and events that go on during this school year. We have a wide variety of ranges at McNear, um, and we operate TK through third, this is the lower grades, and they do a lot of hands-on learning with, um, Geo boards and their tablets and iPads. These...
These are the fourth through sixth grades, and I remember some of my favorite things we did in fourth grade was going to the Gold Rush, which was an overnight field trip. And in fifth grade, I remember doing state reports, which was hard but fun. And in sixth grade, um, so far, my favorite thing is that sixth grade camp, which we just got back from on Friday.
McNear has a garden that is welcome, that everybody is welcome to. Um, there are TK through fifth have garden classes, and there are two, like, we split the group into two. Um, so one goes into the garden and does the digging, planting, watering, and the other group is in the outdoor classroom in the Science Center and does, um, plant anatomy.
Uh, here at McNear, we have, uh, we offer a library to all grades TK through six, and, uh, we just recently had the Fall Book Fair, and it is an event that goes on for a week, and you can come buy books for either yourself, or classes, or your class. And, uh, the last night, there's an event where you can come and buy books. And, um, you can also have dessert, and it's called dessert night.
In sixth grade, we do a lot of important reports, including four book reports, um, Greek mythology studies, and a ancient civilization report.
Um, at McNear, we do an event called the Jog-a-thon, and it's when we run for twenty minutes, and all the students try together, uh, donations, and afterwards, like, after running, we count all of our laps and collect the donations with pledges, and it's our first fundraiser every year, major fundraiser, and it just happened today, so...
Oh.
One of the things that makes McNear super interesting is the, um, mass room, or the McNear Art and Science Center, where there are art notes and lessons, um, you can, it's, there's science, arts and crafts, and robotic Legos, and there's also a lot of microscopes where, um, you can, uh, learn about, like, microscopic organisms.
Um, some of the, we go on many, um, field trips in, at McNear, um, but one of the biggest ones is sixth grade camp, which, like I said, we just got back from on Friday, and it's when all the sixth graders go to Point Benita for three days, and we do a lot of things, like, we have campfires, we go on hikes, one of the days, we did a hike that was over eight miles.
One mile.
Uh, and we saw, uh, coyotes and a lot of other wildlife.
Um, McNear offers, um, two performing arts plays, one, uh, that takes place in the fall with fourth through sixth grade, and, um, this is a recent play practice, um, the, um, both of...
The ones on the bottom.
Yeah, the ones on the bottom, and the one in the spring takes place for first and third grades, and those are on the top, those are, um, past performances.
I can do this.
In the back.
Uh, at McNear, uh, we have tradit-, some traditions, and some of them are the back-to-school barbecue, which, uh, yeah. Um, and the Harvest Festival, the back-to-school barbecue is an event where you can come, and it's like the beginning of the year, and come play games with friends, and we eat really good food, and this year, it was put together by Joey Durkin. And, and the Harvest Festival is an event where you can come in your Halloween costume, and, uh, you play games, and have fun with your friends, and eat food and candy.
Great.
Um, we, at McNear, we, uh, we are strongly based around watershed studies, especially in fourth grade, um, and we hear some pictures of two years ago when we walked down to the Pele River and, um, tested the water.
Thank you for listening, and I hope you come visit our school very soon.
Thank you.
How do you comment your questions for our...
It's a great presentation, very, very good.
A lot of neat stuff going on in the back.
Makes the world.
It's a great speaker, this is not easy, you did a really good job.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Elizabeth, huh? And for, for parents in the room, it's always appropriate to come up to the side and take pictures and videos and things that will never bother us. Good evening, a couple of fifth graders here that are going to tell you all about what's going on at that register right now.
Hi, I'm Grady, and this is Ellen. We're in the fifth grade at Valle Vista, and excited to tell you all about the exciting things happening in our school. First, we'll flashback to last year's open house, a great student was invited to paint a kindness rock. Over the summer, Mrs. Wyre, Mrs. Ackman, and their families came and installed the kindness rocks garden at the front of the school, it's a main name. Then, our PTA partnered with the district to install a new play structure in upper grade yard. It's unique because the green turf blends into the field behind it. All the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students like to climb and play on the new structure. Now, for this school year, we have a lot of new faces on campus. Mr. Bailey on the left is teaching second grade, in the middle, throwing the football, is Miss Astor in sixth grade. Under her is Mrs. Torbit, our new library coordinator, picture with our first author to visit campus this year. And on the right is Mrs. Zagabi, who teaches fourth grade. We have a lot of other new staff as well, psychologist, childcare assistants, aides in TK and K, and our guidance counselor.
Just this Saturday, our PTA has hosted a pancake breakfast. We have vehicles from Hellfire, the Room of Fire Department, and the Police Department. We serve pancakes, sausage, fruit, a lot of, coffee, and hot chocolate, we order the sun one together, and we raised some money for PTA sponsored programs.
Last Friday, while sixth grade were at camp at Point Benita, fourth and fifth graders participated in Bike Radio. It's an event sponsored by Safe Rides to School. Kids brought their bikes or borrowed one, they also brought their helmet, purchased a new one for five dollars or borrowed one. No matter your ability, you got to participate. There was an obstacle course, a road simulation, and you even had teeter totter ride over, it was a great day.
As you know, we are becoming an international bachelor of primary years program school. Our coordinator, Miss Ackman, is our IV consultant. For two days in a ritual, we move towards full authorization. According to the conference room, one of the things we're doing really well is fully numbing our red ribbons, or, uh, fully numbing our campus in the IV learner profile. At Friday assemblies, we're housing awards red ribbons in line of traits of the learner profile. Here you see some students who have received red ribbons so far this year. A student was principal during a game when she took her out with an argument, without an argument. A student showed caring when he buddied up with a newcomer, he doesn't, he doesn't speak with them. Another student was a risk taker when he tried ranch dressing during a salad bar.
Big stuff, right? That's good.
I, each consultant, also acknowledged our teaching garden as a positive impactful component of our program. Kids help plant new beds, move mulch and dirt, weed and harvest. Mrs. Chambers used the last of the lettuce, tomatoes, and cucumbers for salad bar last week. It's fun to eat veggies we work hard to grow.
And finally, Spanish classes in it. Part of becoming an IV school is offering an additional language. They're all learning Spanish, and even though many of our students already speak Spanish, we are adding to their academic. Language, reading, and writing, Miss O, our Span-, our Spanish teacher, incorporates music, dialogue, and cultural activities into learning Spanish. We are all putting together Day of the Dead display at the front of Valle Vista on November first. You're all invited to come see it.
It's already been an exciting few months, thanks for listening, do you have any questions?
On the line.
You didn't.
Some fashion tips up here for my values. Oh, no, Frank, listen.
Are you enjoying being in an IV school? Do you like the project-based, and what do you think of it?
Um, I think it's nice, um, to have that, because then it encourages kids to be kind and caring to other kids, and then to reward them to get a red ribbon.
And so far, you know, teachers have planned their first unit, and various grades have implemented, and other grades won't implement until spring. So when we get to the end of the school year, students should be able to speak to what that looks and feels like. Okay, great. It's on the front lawn, so is it going to be... Right out on Wednesday. That's right, yes. Excellent, I can't wait to see that. That's awesome, that'd be exciting. Great job. Kennerworth, how long's that?
Hi, my name is Katie Hancock, and I'm an eighth grade leadership student representing Kennerworth. We started out our year strong with our seventh grade expert experience, which was a huge success, and the students having lots of fun. We have an upcoming neon dance on October twenty sixth. Our school has been doing great with spirit days and showing lots of participation, and we just finished off our first spirit week with lots of fun lunchtime activities. We've been up, we've begun our friendly competition between classes for the most spirited that takes place every grading period. We recently finished our ASB elections, and our new officers are Grayson Gardner for president, and Lisa Chimalino for vice president, Marana Enel Komar for treasurer, and Australia Gonzalez for secretary. Mr. Orley House, our new assistant principal, has been working hard to keep students on track, and he has also redone our bi-weekly newsletters, and it is looking great. Ms., Ms. Malata from Ten Thousand Degrees has been meeting with students who are having academic challenges, trying, trying to create a successful bridge between Kennerworth and college. Kennerworth recently had our first ELEF meeting with over thirty-eight families in attendance. Rafael Vasquez from Santa Rosa Junior College spoke about academic success, preparing for college and scholarship opportunities. We are looking strong across country this year, and are ready for at least one Pennant Elite Finals. Girls have won three out of four meets, and boys have won two out of four. The girls' basketball teams are looking successful, with the program growing, with eighteen girls on the seventh grade squad this year. We are looking forward to our annual pledgeathon, where Kennerworth has raised over thirty thousand dollars that is going back into the school to support our academic programs. PTSA is putting on an event this Friday, October twelfth, where any student who donated to the pledgeathon is invited. We are really proud of our recently created Kennerworth Charis acronym, which stands for creativity, accountability, respect, empathy, and success. We have banners up around campus to remind students of these, of this acronym, as well as other life skills. We do lessons on these life skills during the sixth grade classes for us as well. English is getting ready for NANARAMO, which is National Writing Month, and PE is focusing on strength training and preparing for the fitness testing, while math has just retested all its students to make sure we were correctly placed in our classes. Band is getting ready for our winter concert, which is being held in December twelfth, and science continues to meet the next generation's standards. Kennerworth has been doing great so far this year, and we are looking forward to the rest of it, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Could you guys go back to the slide, the Kennerworth Charis slide?
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about that program, or how it works in the classroom?
I was trying to... We haven't really done much work in the classrooms with it, but this year and last year, we have monthly lessons on different life skills that our staff is trying to get us to incorp-, incorporate into our lives. So that is kind of the base of what this is.
On campus today, it was, they look amazing. They look beautiful. Awesome. I love it, very inspirational.
Good presentation.
Yeah. Jumping on your feet, too. Targeted. Last but not least, Pelham Jr. High. Come on, let's go. It's him.
Oh, hello, I'm Pedro Morales.
I'm Miriam Norwitz. And we're, um, here to present our, um, school checking report. Pelham Jr. High School's twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen school year is off to a great start. We kicked off the school year with our annual Welcome Back Dance, that was sponsored by ASB and hosted for all our new sixth and seventh grade students. This year's dance was wildly successful, with a participation rate of about seventy-five percent of the students. You can hear them all singing, particularly "Don't Stop Believing," that has become the signature song to end our dances. ASB has also been busy with hosting our first spirit week for the year. Students and staff came as their favorite meme on Monday, their brightest neon on Tuesday, a western wear outfit on Wednesday, a throwback, which we would think AIDS on Thursday, and pink pink on Friday, to raise awareness and honor cancer survivors.
On Wednesday, October third, PJHS participated in their third annual Walk and Roll to School event. This is a national day to use alternative methods to get to school, like walking, riding your bike, using a skateboard or scooter. For our third year, we are excited to share that a hundred and sixty-three students participated.
As a part of the Maker Hub at the Sonoma County Office of Education, PJHS was one of the first schools to participate in the Mobile Maker Lab as part of our Maker Mania during the week of September seventeen. Check out the video that showcases PJHS.
Y'all need a little extra. Oh, there we go.
Did you bypass the word?
What? I tested it earlier. It's fine. I knew where it was.
So while they're, while they're doing that, I want to, I just want to make a, a comment regarding if, if, if participation is any metric, which to us, it's an important one, it's pretty amazing what we're seeing as far as school spirit at all of our secondary school sites. Um, I've been hearing about just massive, massive numbers of students attending dances. You're nodding back there, Cosette, like, I know you guys faced it, we see, you know, when we go out to Kennerworth, we go out to Pelham Jr., Pelham High, we're really seeing some really, uh, pretty significant participation.
Great.
...for educators and students in Sonoma County. With seating for thirty and off the grid solar power, it can bring a classroom or meetings based to parks, schools, and event centers. Allows the, the last three monitors for digital presentations, as well as laptops and iPads. It's a great choice for social involvement, field trips, or hands-on STEMA activities. To learn more, or to book the Pelham Learning Lab, visit scud.org slash MLL.
That's awesome.
The Lady Bantams girls' basketball team has started their season with some great wins, last second buzzer beater, and a few tough losses to really strong teams from Santa Rosa and Slater Middle Schools. Both the seventh and eighth grade teams are showing a lot of heart and passion as they take the floor each time playing to win. There's a lot of hype and excitement as both teams get ready to take on their cross-time rivals at Kennerworth on Thursday.
Our cross-country team has been burning up the courses this year, with many of the meets seeing Bantam Racers coming in first through fifth. Several, several of our students have not only exceeded in their personal bests, three of our runners have come in the top five finishing times for our school records. Our top runner, Javier Gutierrez, crushed our home course with a record-setting, setting pace of six-minute, eleven-second mile average for three miles.
Wow. That's amazing.
Finally, PJHS is in the middle of its only major fundraiser this year, our annual fund drive. Students and families that participate in the fund drive will get an invitation to attend our Bantam Bash scheduled for Friday, October twenty-sixth. The Bantam Bash is a huge community event, like a carnival, put on by a partnership between ASB and the PTSA. We are looking forward to a really fun night of games, friends, family, and food. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions and comments for our Pelham Jr. High kids?
What exactly is the fund drive?
Um, well, we raise money, um, well, it's our biggest fundraising event of the year, so we raise money for, um, to buy supplies for our school, and, um, for a week, we like do various activities that, um, um, that leadership hosts, and I think we're thinking of doing, like, um, pie throwing, you can donate to, I think, either throw a pie at a teacher or a student that's in leadership.
We did that.
We're doing this thing called haunted hallways, I think, where we decorate, um, our school, and it's like, almost like a haunted house where kids get to walk through, and, yeah.
And it ends on that Friday weekend.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. Quick question about our student reports, and our student of the month for the review meeting. Would it take a lot to have a camera back here to videotape the kids, so that schools could then put it on their websites? I don't know how much, I'm, I'm asking always, I don't know how much work that would be, could you talk about it? That would just be something interesting, I always feel bad, because they're presenting to the board, right? And we've got public access is right here, so they kind of get them at a side, and then you've got the poor parents and teachers that are, you know, back there.
Are you talking about a monitor on a camera?
No, 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 I was just talking about, instead of, instead of a principal having to come stand here and videotape with her phone, and then focus to Facebook or something for parents to see, if that is something that we could do, and it'd be short clips, because we'd start and stop each time, and then we could share it with the school site, and they could put it on their school site website, and then parents that weren't here tonight, or even people that wanted to see what was going on at that school, would have kind of a consistent update. And I don't even know if principals are interested, or parents are interested, but I always feel bad that parents are the back, and they just get the back of the kids.
I have a picture for you in the school background.
I saw that.
On video.
And I saw that you thought we had to do that.
Remember all the hassle they gave me when I actually turned it all around? She said, "Just the opposite," you did it wrong.
Hey, that was the privacy of Martha's room. Okay, moving on, um, I just, an idea that may be too much work in part fact, but I'm just curious. Um, eight point, um, jumpstart summary, you want to take a break now, or?
Take a quick break.
Okay, we'll take a three-minute break, so those students need to file out before the longer presentations.
All right, we're gonna move on. Item eight point two, Jumpstart Five-Year Summary Report by Eric Backman and Casa Grande.
No, you won't. Just be yourself.
Okay, so I've tried to assemble the largest presenting team ever. So I'm Eric Backman, the very proud principal of Casa Grande. I actually requested this opportunity because I want the board to appreciate all of the amazing educators and partners we have that are supporting Casa's students so that we as a district can achieve our most important goal, preparing students for college. And as this program is designed to do, getting them access. This is about access and equity. I've been an educator for twenty-three years. This is my tenth year as an administrator. And this is the program that I'm most proud of being associated with. It's the most innovative, exciting, and the trends show measurably successful. It's an incredible thing that we're endeavoring to do. So we've got amazing people here, including some alumni that are jumpstarters now, ambassadors to the JC. They'll introduce themselves as they present. The agenda for the presentation, we're gonna share some history and rationale for creating the program. You'll have an understanding of the program components, how it works, the steps that students go through to get ready to attend the JC. I'm gonna share some growth trends and demographic information. We have Valerie here from the College Career Center, who's gonna share with you some of the work being done there, including some student testimonials. We have our amazing partners, Ten Thousand Degrees here. And we're gonna close with a couple of alumni working at present. All right, so I'm gonna hand things out to Sharon now.
So hello.
Hi.
I'm a little nervous, but I really have to say I'm so excited to be here to talk about Jumpstart. And I'm proud to be standing with this amazing group of colleagues to make Jumpstart real. But to get the full flavor of what has happened with Jumpstart, I want to describe what it was like five years ago before Jumpstart came into existence. So five years ago, it was a conversation between a math teacher and a counselor. And that counselor was me when I was in my minor life, when I was a counselor. And we were talking about our seniors and how we were getting seniors ready for college after high school. And seniors who were planning to attend the JC, which is over fifty percent of our student body, go to the JC, were sidelined during the college application cycle. Because the JC, and you know, when they've been functioning, their matrix relation process was all in the late spring and summer. So our seniors would, you know, at the beginning of the year, we'd go into classes with a counselor, "Who's going to a four-year college?" And all my hands shoot up, the seniors are so proud. And then, "Who's going to the JC?" It'd be like the students were ashamed, they didn't want to say. It's like, "I'm just going to the JC." It wasn't with a source of pride. We thought, "Well, that's not right. They're going to college." And many of those students are gonna transfer. All the effort that the teachers and the counselors put on was to get the four-year college-bound students engaged in college. Placement tests, ACT, SAT, college essays, the application cycle. November thirtieth was a big date. The teachers would help write the college essays. The J students didn't get any of that benefit because that college cycle for them hadn't started yet. So they were left out. And we, Mr. Wigger and I said, "They should all be on the same cycle. They should be all planning for college together. They're all seniors, they're all gonna be in somewhere, something, in the following fall. So we need to get with it and do something about this." And they all need to be planning for college before they graduate. Whereas historically, the seniors were graduating and then they did all their college planning in the summer if they were going to the JC. They didn't have the benefit of our help at school, of the counselors, of the teachers, and of all the energy and excitement of preparing for college. That was what the world was like five years ago. And it was like that for all the high schools. That was just the way it was. It wasn't that Casa was bad, that was the pattern that happened. So we thought, "We have to do something about that." Well, what's the significance of that number? So what this shows is some data. And this is showing that fall 2017, we get this data every single year, and it's a bit about the same. We had thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-three students attending SRJC last fall 2017. They don't have a date out for this year. The next highest one was Sonoma State University. We had a hundred-and-eight students. And then you can see the numbers going all the way down. We were spending all of our energy preparing these students when here, every year, we had over a thousand students at the JC in our own backyard. So Mr. Wigger and I were like, "Oh, my goodness, let's do something. Let's call the JC." And the JC being who they are, Denise Cooper is shaking her head. I have to tell you that we had a year, or about six months of meetings with Denise Cooper, Laurlyn Larson, Roberto Quiroz. And we planned, "How can we make this happen? How can we get the JC college cycle on track with the four-year college cycle?" And the JC had to move mountains and rivers and streams to make it happen. The placement test cycle had to be changed, their application cycle had to be changed, and their counseling two-seventy cycle had to be changed. It was revolutionary, but they did it. And it took a while. And so to get the full benefit of what everybody's gonna explain now, I just want to tell you, just explain what it was. And those numbers show, we had to do something and we did it. And so now you're gonna hear about what we've done in five years. It's remarkable. And it's exciting.
So my name is Julie Poasser. I'm one of the counselors at Casa Grande High School. I started three years ago, and three years ago I took on the task of being the counselor over the Jumpstart program. And it's grown incredibly over the past five, six years since they've been doing it, but especially in the past three years. So there's a lot that goes into the Jumpstart program. There's a lot of planning and preparation on our end, but also the students' end. So we try to get as many of our seniors as we can to jump onboard with the Jumpstart program. Typically, what this looks like is about once a month is our goal. We meet with our Jumpstart students at lunch. So they have to give up one of their off-campus lunches to come in. And typically, what that looks like is a short presentation we give, and then they're doing some kind of action item. So we just had our first Jumpstart meeting two weeks ago. We did a short overview of what they're going to do over the span of the year. And then we had them go on and fill out a Google form to sign up for one of our SRJC application workshops. So those workshops will take place over the span of two days next week. And so that's step one of the process, completing the SRJC application. From there, we help them enroll and sign up for Counseling Two Seventy in the spring. It's a three-day course, sort of like an introduction to college, all the ins and outs, the things you need to know. And during that class, they actually get to meet with an SRJC counselor and develop their academic plan, depending what their goals are, certificate to transfer. And so they meet with a counselor for that. And then during the Jumpstart program, we also help them complete their financial aid applications. In the past, we've also helped them do the Doyle Scholarship, which is the easiest five seconds, five minutes they've ever done. It's not based on their parents' income, only based on their academic GPA in high school. A big change that has come across this year, the students don't have to do that application anymore. The way they get that money is now through completing the financial aid application. So with Ten Thousand Degrees, we've been doing a big push over the past few years. But now for the students who are attending SRJC, it's even more important for them to be doing that application. We help them learn about SRJC learning communities, programs, services. We get our 504 students and our IEP students connected with the Disability Resource Center, our lower-income students with the EOPS program. And then the end, big, exciting part is the very last part. If our seniors are onboard with every step of the process, they actually earn priority three registration. Which initially, they're like, "Yeah, so what? Priority three registration." They don't realize until actually the day they get to register, May second, what that means. So last year was the first year that our students actually got to register before they graduated. Again, as Sharon explained, we've changed sort of how the JC does things. And so last year on their registration date, we had a big celebration. And they got to come in and register for classes. And they saw, as they were plugging in, "There's three spaces left and I entered, now there's none." And so it sort of, you know, was huge. "Oh, that's why priority registration is big." So that's the biggest part of what they get out of it each year. And then something really exciting, I think, is we are now live. Last year, SRJC put on their website a Jumpstart link that has all the information. Sort of how our start at our school has spread countywide and even further. So other schools are modeling a program after ours. And then on our Casa website, we now have up-to-date information. If a student were to miss a meeting or parents wanted information, we have the dates ahead of time. All the information is now accessible through our Casa website, so very exciting. And with that, I will pass it over to Eric, who will talk about the growth and trends.
Yeah, so who are the students who are completing Jumpstart? This is the five-year participation trend we've seen. I don't know about you, but you don't see this in public education very often, this kind of steady growth.
Hey, you increased costs.
Except for that, good. And so I have to report that this current year, our first meeting, we had a hundred-and-forty-five Casa seniors sign up for the registration course.
Off the screen!
Last year, that number was a hundred-and-four. So we're gonna continue to see this kind of incredible growth. This gives you a sense of the percentage of students who are jumpstarters compared to the total number of Casa students going to the JC. So we're well over fifty percent now of JC-bound Casa students who are Jumpstart-ready. Our goal is a hundred percent. And this is an interesting chart. So this is a chart that shows the education of the parents of our Jumpstart students. And you could spend a lot of time with it, but one of the things that jumps out for me is that we're seeing more students participate with parents who have higher education levels. Could be related to economics. I think it has a lot to do with what Sharon Howell pointed out, that we've raised the stature of the JC-bound student. There's no longer shame in that. Kids say at the Casa with pride, "Yeah, I'm doing Jumpstart, I'm going to the JC, and then I'm gonna transfer out." That, to me, is a big sign of success. And then, of course, the big blue band on the left here, as you're gonna see, we are, without marketing or framing to the students, we are capturing first-generation college-going kids. Percentage of socioeconomic disadvantaged students, which mirrors the school population. Again, we're not trying to reach these kids. We're not saying this program's for you, nor are we doing it for our second language learners. Which is one of the most successful things about the program. It reflects the school. And here are English and non-native English speakers, sixty-one percent last year, second language learners participating. And it goes without saying, this is tying into some of the most significant and important district goals we have, access to college and reaching historically disadvantaged suburbs. This program is doing all of that at once. And one of the primary drivers of the program, promoters of the program, is Valerie Austin. Absolutely amazing.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everybody. I'm Valerie Austin. I'm the College Career Center album discussers for Casa Grande, as well as Carpe Mium and Sonoma Mountain. But tonight, I'm here to represent Casa Grande. It was about five years ago that I retired from Sonoma County Superior Court. I have a very extensive background in human resources, but also state farm insurance companies. And three years ago, I said, "Wow, I saw this job." I'm ed-join. I don't even know what donut ed-join. But I was traveling around the world, spending my money, having a good time. I'm still traveling around the world, spending my money. This amazing opportunity came about at Casa Grande High School. And I said, "Wow, with my background in human resources and working with a different population, from a resume writing interview technique, I said, 'You know, let me just shoot off a resume real quick for here.'" And honestly, I was not expecting a phone call. I was in Trader Joe's and they said, "Hey, we'd like to offer you the position." I said, "Oh, God, I'm not really ready to go back to work." And it was this wonderful salary that they were offering me. So I just have to be honest with you, of course, it's not about the income. It's about the outcome. And that's really why I'm here at Casa Grande and serve my other two schools here. So the College Career Center is a very inclusive place. As Susan would say, "It's pretty dope in here, Miss Austin." You want some great dope in here, that's good. We have freshmen coming in there, all the way to seniors. And they come in there for many different reasons. I mean, to do homework, to get a bite to eat, I have snacks, or just to eat lunch, to collaborate, but most importantly, to seek out resources that are available from a trade school, community colleges, we're talking about the state with the JC tonight, before-year schools as well. We run a lot of work-based learning opportunities out of there. And basically, I'm there as their resource and that's Valerie. I don't wanna talk more about myself, but anyway, we're here to prepare our students. This is a quote from one of our students, and I didn't pay him to write this. The College Career Center is the most underrated place on the Casa Grande High School campus, you can read for yourself. But the whole essence of high school is to prepare you for your future, whether that be college or another career. This preparation can be overwhelming and stressful. However, with the help of Miss Austin, they asked me when could they start calling me Val? I said, "When you graduate." And the College Career Center, this process becomes a lot easier. The College Career Center has allowed for me to find a lot of extracurricular activities, along with aiding in the final for college. And this student here, he's going to, who knows where he's going, probably going to Yale, I'm not sure. But anyway, that's one of our students, and you can see some of the slides there, some of the workshops.
Well, Valerie, we'll come to the JC students at the end. I thought they would.
Well, thanks for letting me know. When I've spoken to you. But anyway, I am just excited to be at Casa and to be working with our students, and they help me grow as well. So thank you for your time.
How are you all doing?
Good.
This is exciting, right? I'm here in this corner listening. I just get excited of all the work that Casa's doing. And with that being said, hi, Miss Hupset. First and foremost, you might be wondering, who is this person up here talking to us like they know me? My name is Figo K. I'm the College Access Program Manager for Ten Thousand Degrees. And I'm gonna get into Ten Thousand Degrees in a little bit. And one of the exciting pieces that I hear tonight is collaboration. And it's this partnership that we have with people with the same goal and mission, to support our students to get to where they want to go. And a little bit about me, I also can talk like forever. Dave knows that part. So I'm keeping it short. I am one of those students that they're talking about, who low income, had no idea where to go, had no direction. And in the school that I went to when I graduated in 2009, there was nobody talking to me this way. And I became part of Ten Thousand Degrees program as a rising senior. And I became part of 10,000 Degrees program as a rising senior at Orlando High School. And it was because of 10,000 Degrees to wear them today. They helped me believe in myself. They helped me achieve my goals of graduating college, coming back to my community, and helping other students do the same. That is who we are. With me today, we have Ms. Stephanie Reyes, who is our Institute Program Fellow, recently graduated from UC Davis. And this is what we want to bring to the students, recent graduates who share your story, who know who you are, can talk about the process, and say, you can also do it. Earlier today, with Kenilworth Junior High School, one of the students talked about a new program that started at Kenilworth and CASA, that transition piece. And Ms. Ramona Polk.
The amazing Ramona Polk.
Yeah, I read it then, you know. She is leading that program at Kenilworth Junior High School, and what she likes to call the Still-Life Rights Program. Having a caseload of those students, helping them transition successfully into Casa Grande and have them be at Casa Grande, connecting with them, how's the semester, how are you doing? Let's forget about classes for right now, how are you? And then let's get into why this is an amazing program, why we're here to support you. But a lot of people always say, like, what is 10,000 Degrees in general? So our mission, excuse me for reading, I just think this is very important for us to get out. The mission of 10,000 Degrees is to achieve educational equity and help students from low-income backgrounds get to and through college in order to positively impact their communities and the world. And when we say to and through, that means when we work with these students in high school as seniors, and they go to SRJC, Sonoma State, or wherever they choose to go, we're going to stay with them. Calling them, Facebook messaging them, how are you? How's the semester? Hey, we have a summer internship. Come back over the summer and work with us. Until they're crossing that front stage with a diploma in their hand. And that is what 10,000 Degrees is all about. So with that, our goal is we aim to dramatically increase the baccalaureate degree attainment rates for students from low-income backgrounds throughout California and create educational equity in the communities that we serve. And that community here is Petaluma. And I'm excited to see, Rigo and Rosa here is going to talk about what they do at SRJC, because they're vice-sites. And so here they are. And again, with what we do at 10,000 Degrees as a whole, we help students from low-income backgrounds get to and through, number one, keys, right? Over 80% of 10,000 Degrees students who enter four-year college graduate. They graduate. 80% of our students graduate. That's so much more higher than the national average, right, of 31%. And that to us is an amazing bullet point. 10,000 Degrees community college students transferred to and graduate from four-year college at almost three times the national average. A lot of this is part of this collaboration that we have with SRJC, with the high schools, with community partners. And once our students are at SRJC, making sure they're connected to the right resources. You want to transfer? Let's go see your transferring counselor there. You want to do a trade? Fantastic. Let's talk to the people to help you get to where you want to go. That's what those numbers show right there, that partnership that we have together. And the other piece that's unique, there is no GPA requirement to our program whatsoever. We believe that every student who wants to go to college, they can. A GPA number does not determine who they are as a person. And this is exactly what it's all about. I was not a 3.0 student, and it wasn't for 10,000 Degrees to see in me that I can believe in myself, I wouldn't be here in front of you today. And to finish up, I got a bullet point of notes that I think is going to be amazing for you. We are also here at Petaluma High School, and between Casa Grande and Petaluma High School, between the years of 2017, 2018, we have awarded scholarships to those students. 94 students are currently receiving up to $156,185 in free financial aid. That's scholarships from the community, scholarships from 10,000 Degrees, putting aside the free money from the state and Pell eligibility. So these are your students that are coming back to your communities and eventually sit next to you. And tell the people, talk to Val, talk to Eric and Sharon about the importance of what education can do. So thank you so much, and I'm going to let Rigo and Rosa.
Very quickly here, I do have something else to say. Okay, we have a couple of testimonies, okay? But one of my very first assignments three years ago, on the very first day of my employment, October the 6th, was Jump Started. I was taken by one of our counselors to Mr. Wicker's room, saying, okay, I said, jump who? So anyway, I've been jumping there ever since, and I just love to do it. This is one of the testimonies from a student. Jump Start for me was, he graduated last year. Jump Start for me was an amazing program, especially for a first-generation student. I got the help, even all my questions answered. Thanks to the program, I learned how and what to do in order to sign up for my SRJC classes. And overall, I'm really glad I was a part of Jump Start. So there's a couple pictures of Julie, myself, the graduates, and all the work that we've been doing. So then we have some fun stuff in here as well. You know, our celebratory, we just did a big ELD workshop with our English language learners. This robe is for someone that's six, eight. I mean, they do fight, they have a good time. So anyway, just to show you that we don't always, we do focus, but we also have fun in the College and Career Center. So with that, I would like to introduce to you our alum, our ambassadors, Rosa. I'm not sure who wants to go first. She's a 2016 grad from Casa Grande. We have Rigo, or Rob Rigo, who graduated this year. Rigo graduated. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to be here tonight. Like Val, I can call her Val because I graduated today. Like she mentioned, my name is Rosa Collin, and I am one of those proud SRJC Berkeley students. You can see it on my shirt. And I'm a proud 10KD student as well. And I'm just here to talk to you about like my experience basically at Casa Grande. I graduated in 2016, like she mentioned. And if it wasn't for Val and the College and Career Center, I wouldn't be where I am today. I was one of those low-income students, first generation, that didn't even know what college was. I just heard it was, you know, a place, like, I'm going to Sac State, I'm going to Berkeley. And I thought, how can I go there? Like, can I go with you? Or I could just go to Berkeley and they'll accept me. But as we know, that's not the case. So if it wasn't for Val, I wouldn't be able to get that opportunity. I actually, I submitted an application to Sacramento State my senior year, and I was fortunate enough to be accepted at Sacramento State. And I was set, my mind was set, you know, I didn't think of JC as a backup plan. And Ms. Val was always telling me, Rosa, you should think of the JC as a backup plan, just in case something happens. And I told her, no, no, I'm going to Sac State, I'm going to Sac State. And she's like, mmm-hmm. She knew, she knew that, you know, a backup plan is always a smart choice, and I didn't think about it like that. It wasn't until the summer when I accepted my admission to Sac State. I got my apartment at Sac State. I went to my orientation, and I even purchased textbooks when I got my financial aid award letter. And unfortunately, they didn't give me the money I was hoping for, so I wasn't able to attend Sac State. And for me, I saw it at the moment, I was really upset because I thought, that's my dream school, you know? I went to Sac State. I love Sac State. I saw myself having a future there. And some of my friends were going as well, so we were going to share an apartment, and I was set. But I didn't see it as a blessing in disguise at the moment. And I was super rushed during the summer, and then Val got my email, like, hey, Val, I need help with the JC. And she's like, she typed, mmm-hmm. She's like, I told you, I'm like, anyway, Val, I should have listened to you at the beginning. So she helped me get through Jump Start and everything. And I can proudly say, if it wasn't for Val, Jump Start, and the JC, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be on my last year of the JC, applying right now to go to either UC Berkeley or UCLA to pursue my bachelor's in social work and come back to my community and serve, just like everybody here. If it wasn't for all these people, I wouldn't be here where I am. I'm currently, you know, struggling with classes, 16 units. I'm in student government at the JC, which is something I never saw myself doing. And as you can see in those pictures, it's all about solving students. That's what we do.
Hi, my name is Rigo Garcia. I'm a first-year student at the San Rosario Junior College. Pretty much what I want to say today is I just want to give thanks especially to 10,000 Degrees. To me, 10,000 Degrees was like the main base and the reason why I chose to go to college. During my sophomore years, when I first learned about the program, I heard it through an announcement in Spanish class. And then after hearing the announcement, I went into a meeting that I had. It was like a sort of introduction of what the program was. And then after just hearing more in-depth of what it was all about, I just realized like, this sounds pretty cool. It's like, before they even thought about going to college, I just pictured myself pretty much as working, like all of my other family members did after high school, or even finished high school. So that was my thought process. But after applying to the program and getting into them and going to the summer intensive, 10,000 Degrees really helped my mind grow in a lot of ways. So 10,000 Degrees is really the base of why I'm doing everything I'm doing today. So a huge help to them, and I appreciate them very much. So stepping forward now, after finally, you know, being in that environment of college and all that, I was introduced to the Jump Start program. And I was introduced to this when I used to hang out a lot in the College and Career Center. Like I said, like, I started hanging out there during my senior year. And like I said, like, I was never really the type of person to go like be involved so much in that. But thanks to the 10KD again, like, they're my base that were kind of rounding me to be in that type of environment of college. And then when I went and hung out a lot in the College and Career Center, I got to know Valerie Austin. She is a wonderful person. She is really the, like, another huge support system I have. So I was really fortunate enough to have the 10KD and Valerie Austin and the College and Career Center as a huge support system for me. Being a part of the Jump Start program was really, really exciting and kind of, it was really, it was just all about exciting because I just, I'm a, no one in my family has gone to college, so just learning about that process on how to fill out an application and just like being involved in new things, most of all, was pretty exciting to me. And then, so yeah, that's probably what I'm saying, so I'm good. Yeah, Valerie Austin, she was, she was very important. We built a relationship in there, more like a friendship, you can say. Like, we went there just like, not talk about college, we like literally just talked about anything going on in our lives. And then, so that kind of just felt the confidence for me and for her to ask me questions about everything. So she always reminded me about like deadlines, about applications, as well as 10KD, because I would meet with them on every Wednesday of the week. Overall, just these two programs are amazing. They're really the reason why I'm here today. And another huge thing I thought was, it made me get out of my comfort zone. I'm going to tell a story one time about one time when I walked into the College and Career Center. Ms. Austin was on my computer, and then she was telling me about a job opportunity that they had at the San Rosario Junior College, and I was to be an outreach ambassador. She was telling me about it, and then I was kind of like, if you about it, like, should I? Because she told me, she's like, oh, you should like apply for the job, or whatnot. She was saying that she can email my boss, this senior, and follow. And then she was just saying, oh, you should, you should do this. And I just thought in my head, I wasn't really sure if I should or not. But I just felt like I needed to get out there, get out of my comfort zone to be in person and just grow. So I took on that challenge to feel myself out there, and then, yeah, I'm here today because I'm an outreach ambassador. I'm still learning every day, as you can see now, like, I'm not as comfortable, because it's all really new to me, just being up here in front and just being involved. But I really hope that I continue to grow and just continue to develop as a person. And then again, I just want to thank 10KD and Valerie Austin at the College and Career Center, and definitely Mr. Backman and everyone else who started the Jump Start program, because without them, I wouldn't be here today.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Goes without saying, one of the great joys of my job is working with such incredible people. We build good teams at CASA. It's probably the thing we do best, and this is the best that we've got. Yeah.
Wonderful.
I have a couple of questions. I think JC is a great resource, not only for graduating students, but for the whole community. And I went to JC and was happy to be able to go, and first with my family to go to college. And really, all these testimonies are right. It's a great springboard. My question, does it still have a relationship with UC Davis and Berkeley, where if you take those classes, you get priority admission? I just think that's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful gift that the JC provides if you're willing to work at it.
Sure.
And then I was going to ask Ms. Austin, I'll call you Val, because I've. Are you, are you able to help some of these kids get like housing up by the JC? Because some of the opportunities of going way before your college, quite frankly, is just learning how to live independently. You know, just the little things of, you know, buying your own food and your toothpaste and your toothbrush, just those things. So I know housing is a horrible, horrible issue throughout our society, but does the JC still provide housing? Or did it get rid of that?
I think they, they used to have some, when I was going to school back in the day, okay?
They used to have rooms.
They used to have another apartment that were run at Elliott Drive, were really designated for JC students. But they don't really have any dormitories or apartments, but they do.
We actually had Kent Hall originally, I don't know if you guys remember that. We actually had dormitories on our San Rosario campus. And we do, do have an apartment complex right on campus that we do partner with. But we're actually working really hard right now, trying to respond to the needs of housing for students in Sonoma County. And we're working with a special group and are looking to build maybe a partnership with a developer. We give the land, they build the complex, they manage for SRJC students, faculty, staff, all of the above. But it is something we're exploring, because we do know, you know, especially since the virus, housing in Sonoma County is a challenge, especially for students on those incomes.
But a lot of the students, they live at home. Because one of the, part of the beauty of the JC is it's a solid education and they can transfer. And so they can have two years at home, not paying the huge costs of living in a dorm, which is, you know, $1,500 a month. So they're just paying, and they usually get the Bob fee waiver, so their cost for their education is minimal, and they have the Doyle Scholarship. They may be able to attend college for free, basically, and live at home. So they get a rock-solid education, a solid springboard to transfer to a four-year college at no cost. So then they might be graduating with a bachelor's with a minimal amount of debt. So I think our students are economically smart, and they live at home. Because it's, we have, look at Petaluma, we have a fabulous thing, right? You know, you can walk to it right now.
That's commendable, commendable, all of you. Thank you for the presentation.
Just quick, do most students go to Petaluma campus, San Rosario? It just depends on your major or practice?
It depends on the major, it depends on the courses, it depends on the certificate. Some do both campuses. I think it's for convenience, the better one is the Petaluma campus.
Parking's better.
And you don't have 101 traffic.
That's why I go to Petaluma campus.
At some point, students do often find they eventually have to go to the San Rosario campus to get some of the higher-level science courses. But we do have Measure H, and we are building and improving our Petaluma campus and are hoping to serve students, you know, right here in our community without setting them up that 101 corridor.
I have one more question, sorry, for 10,000 Degrees. Do you, how do students get involved with your program? Do they apply? Anyone's knowledgeable?
Good question. There is an application process, and it'll be for rising seniors, and that will be opening up sometime next couple of months. And so we'll be going to both high schools and doing rallies, getting pizza for them, you know.
If you feed them, they will come. There's a great website, 1-0-0-0-1000degrees spelled out dot org. Really quick, I wanted to mention the Remind app. That's amazing, like, great way to get through and help kids. That's great. And I want to thank you all very much. I too came from parents that didn't go to college and started at the JC.
Can I give them the thanks, I mean?
Absolutely.
Another thing I want to say is that something very, very good about 10KD is that they do not not only work with the applicants that are in the program, but they also work with anybody else. So they're always open to help anybody in the, in the high schools. So anyone can literally show up on Wednesdays, whether or not you're in the program or not, and they'll help you out, like I said, you always talk to them.
And then how, how does 10,000 Degrees stand business?
It's all privately funded. So we do apply for grants, and then then factors that just believe in the work that we do.
And do you have fundraisers or anything?
Yes. So in coming April, we'll have a gala in Marin County.
Make sure you shoot some. Yeah, let us know. Let us, let us, let us know, because I haven't attended that one before, but that's the reason to attend.
I'll just add, we are funding a position at Kenilworth, so starting in the summer, they help come and work with the Bridge students at summer school. So you have 10,000 Degrees support, starting at Kenilworth, supporting those kids who are transitioning to high school. Transitioning, sometimes that's difficult, so.
It's an incredible program. I mean, they were in Tamalas, and it was just amazing.
Well, if you can survive that, you can survive many.
That's 10,000 Degrees right there.
And like, one of the, one of the things I wish we had more money to support is more counselors and gallery as well. What you guys do, and I'm learning more and more as my children get older.
And your caseload.
How many students you have in a caseload, and how many things you do from supporting them emotionally to educationally, all of that in between, thank you. All of that in between. Um, thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing the amazing work that you all do. I mean, you're okay too.
I like you doing it.
If I could just do a quick plug. Yes, for Casa Grande, I mean, being at SRJC, I work here at Petaluma, I'm very fortunate and I get to work with all South Sonoma County schools, which we're really lucky. But Casa Grande really sets the bar high for all the other schools in this area. And if I could mold what they do and their energy and their support for their students and really duplicate it throughout this entire county, all the way up to Cloverdale, I would. Cause they really, they, no, no school really pushes the edge like Casa Grande does.
Well, and I, I remember when you were the assistant principal and Martin and I did a site visit and you did, yeah, this, this is. Oh, and here is where we really need some help with counseling, you know, and funding hasn't been there and you've just figured out how to get it done. It's amazing. So thank you all very much. That was great. Thank you.
Good luck.
Eight point three. And then you have page of HOSA students invited to national conference for HOSA all to Mrs. Page.
What?
Yeah, well.
Where are you going?
We went.
Well, you went, how was it?
We're gonna find out right now.
This is A or D C?
D C.
Ooh, alright.
Um, so first of all, thank you because I know that I wouldn't have been able to afford this trip if it wasn't fully funded. Um, but basically as you'll learn in this presentation, we went to Washington DC, we stayed in Virginia and we went to the Capitol. We went sightseeing, we did our tours. Um, we had conferences and we learned about leadership skills and not only about HOSA, but just about how to make it in the world, I guess. Sounds a little broad, but we just talked about how to have a conversation, like, kind of think what you thought you knew, but you really don't.
What is HOSA stand for?
Health Occupation Student Association. So HOSA to me really just means opportunity. I started in Ms. Judda's Biology and Community Health class and she was really trying to get me into HOSA. And I just, I was hesitant and then my junior year, she asked me to come to the elections and I was elected Secretary of HOSA. And we went to DC and I just saw like all this new culture and I got involved in politics, which is, I'm only seventeen and I was already an active member of the government. And I know now that I really wanna move to Washington DC and pursue politics, um, even if it's just small. It just really opened my eyes and to me, the most important thing is that I make a change in the world. I don't really care so much about money or anything like that. And this Health Occupation Student Association showing me that you can make a change in the world through health occupations without being a nurse or a doctor, or working a regular job in a hospital. So my purpose, um, like I said, is to really just make a change and by, I don't know, it was insane just going and being in my Capitol and just, it just was breathtaking. And I had went one time before in eighth grade, but like I didn't really know what, who FDR was or what it meant. And then I went back after taking US history and I just knew every, I didn't know everything, but I just had such a greater awareness for what I was seeing. And, yeah. So the Washington Leadership Academy, aside from going on tours and sightseeing, we went, um, in the hotel, in the conference room, we went and we learned, like I said, how to have normal conversations. Like, we sat down with a partner from, I sat with someone from Florida, Tennessee, just from all over the country. And then we had a conversation and you had to listen to them for seven minutes. Like, you could not say word back. You could only ask questions and hear the response. And it was like, when you're having a conversation with someone, you always put in your input. And you were able to learn so much more about this person by not saying it and just, it showed me that silence is powerful. And it was just so much more than learning about health occupation. It was just like, it was amazing just to be joined by so many new people and see the opportunities that wait for me when I graduate. So, this picture from sophomore year, um, that is the president Barbara. We were in her Biology and Community Health. And this just kinda opened my eyes because we didn't just learn about health occupations. We did a whole unit on the homeless population in Petaluma and went on a tour from Mary Isaac Center. And it was just crazy to see how one thing can impact so much of our lives. Like, I spend a lot of my time walking around Petaluma and I just see the Petaluma River and it's, it's so gross and health im- impacts it. So it was just, it really opened my eyes to see that through health occupation, you could achieve so much more. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Wow.
How many students are back there for the?
It was just me and the president.
But I mean, overall, they are from, throughout the nation.
Yeah, for any people. It was crazy.
Barbara was supposed to be here tonight as well, but she went home early with a fever this afternoon. So unfortunately, she couldn't be here as well. But yeah, there was something like four hundred students from all, every state in the nation, including Puerto Rico.
And what's, what grade? Is it totally random or what grade do you normally get people?
So we just started a jump division, which is a junior high. So we have a handful of kids at PJHS that are joining us now. So that when they get to Petaluma High, they're already kinda dialed in. But, um, we have freshmen through seniors at the high school and like I said, a handful of the junior high students.
So how many kids do you usually take?
Uh, well, to that one, this was our first time attending the Washington Leadership Academy. Um, there's a lot of different workshops and events. So there's a regional leadership conference coming up at the end of October. So we've taken a handful of folks to that one. Um, there's a state leadership conference that's gonna be going on in, um, March this year. And that one's gonna be this year, it's in Sacramento. Um, it alternates between Anaheim and Sacramento. So this year will be in Sacramento. So we're hoping to partner up with Casa again. So we've done in the past where we'll share a bus up and take a crew. And that, we can usually take a few, quite a few more when we go up to Sacramento.
So how many did you take to DC this time?
Just the two this time to DC. But it was such an awesome experience for them that I want all my officers to go next year if we can figure out how to do it. And like, we all came home saying, okay, everybody needs to be an officer. Like, there's no limit on who can be and like how many officers we have. So I'm like, all of you all just need to be officers. So I could take you on this because it was so amazing.
How many, how many students do you have in?
In HOSA? It varies every year, but, um, around fifty. And I'm hoping to grow that a little bit. So with our health pathway that we've been developing, it's been getting a little bit bigger, bigger. And then now that we have our jump program, a little fledgling flow program going there, we're hoping to grow it even more.
Do you do any fundraising specific to HOSA?
We do, yeah. I mean, nothing, we don't have like an annual, something that we do, but we have miscellaneous things happening, yes. There will be actually a little bit of a fundraiser going on at the eighth bullet. Won't be necessarily for our chapter specifically, but we're working again with Casa Grande's HOSA chapter to do a little friendly competition to see who can fundraise the most for, uh, a charity. So they haven't decided which one. It'll either be, um, NAMI, which is the National Association for Mental Illness, or, um, the, um, Pediatric Cancer Foundation. So, um, NAMI is one that California HOSA has kinda partnered with sort of long-term. And then, um, every two years, National HOSA has a new partner that they work with. And so the, um, Pediatric Cancer Foundation is their new one that they just chose for the next two years. So it'll be one of those two.
And do you find that, um, cause I actually take students to DC and I found that the students that got the most out of it were juniors. Cause they're immersed in US liter- US history, US literature. Is, is that who went with you this year, juniors?
Uh, we had two seniors. Um, I, yeah, I could see that. Um, but the thing that was so awesome was like, the last day that we were there was a Tuesday and we actually went to the Capitol and so they, all the students ran around and had appointments with various senators and representatives. Mainly it was, we were with their aides and stuff, but they actually got time in the offices. So we were in the Hart Senate Building. We were in the other sen- you know, the representatives. We went to the Capitol. We did not see Jared Tuckman because he was here while we were there. But, uh, you wanna tell them about the Senate Gallery?
Oh, yeah. So, um, we went to the Senate Gallery and we got to see the senators speak. And like you said, I'm, I'm in the United States government right now. So I didn't really, like, I understood what the Senate was and I understood the processes and the laws and all that stuff, but like, I literally went and saw it. And so when I came back to school and, right, and we're talking about the Senate.
And Jeff Schumer and Chuck Grassley were like caving it out when we're.
Yeah, we're nice. It was pretty funny. And then I come back to school and we're talking about Kavanaugh and we like saw someone speak out on that incident. And it just like.
It brings it to life.
Yeah, exactly.
Good for you.
Good. How did you get all your expenses paid? Did you?
So California HOSA has had a hard time getting people to go because it's so far and it's so expensive. So this year, the California HOSA Board actually chose to throw some money at it. So they, uh, in June, they said, all right, the first nine chapters, that get us their paperwork by such and such a date, we'll give you some grant money of this amount. And so I blasted it out to my people and this is summer, mind you, and Misty and Barbara were the two who got their paperwork right back in. And so they were in and so we went. But yeah, we'll definitely work on it. And it was really awesome too because Barbara really wanted to go last year, but we kinda found out about it late. And so we didn't get all of our stuff organized and have the funds for taking her then. So I promised her, I said, I'm definitely gonna take her this year. And so we got to go and I got to take Misty as well and it was amazing.
Misty, so what, what's your whole name again? What's your name?
Misty Catherine Challe.
I'm sorry.
Misty Challe, C-H-A-L-L-E.
Just keep track so when you're up there.
M-I-S-T-Y.
Yeah.
Now I can send my tweet.
When you're up there just dominating in Washington and just remember. Just remember the old adage that anybody's life's sausage where the law shouldn't watch him being made.
True, true.
Messy process, right?
Are you planning to move to DC right out of high school or? Go to Georgetown or Marshall University or George W.
Yeah, I don't know. I kinda wanna just take a leave here and travel, but I can, I can do that later in life. I don't know. I just, like, even before I went, I just really had no idea what I wanna do and I still don't. But I really do wanna move to the East Coast and I definitely thought to move to one in DC, but.
There's so many good colleges there too.
I love it.
We had a web event to have dinner one night with one of our alumni who's at, like, George Washington. So that was.
Oh, cool.
Well, good luck to people from this area that are back there to help you. So good luck to you.
Yeah.
You're right. This position's a real one. It's great.
I love you. And, and again, Linda, so much passion for a program with your students. What would we do if we didn't have that? So thank you so much. I get it by the way you're talking. You're so excited. Thank you so much. That's what makes a difference. Um, you know, we talked about this a long time ago, I think. I'm not even sure where or when. But one of the things, um, even being on the board and being up here, it's, there's, we have so many programs and so many things going on and so much fundraising. And if you're connected to a program that's there, then a lot of your, I mean, obviously it's gonna go to that school and a program that your children are involved in. But you know, some people's kids are gone, but maybe they still wanna donate places.
I do, I do.
And so, I think it'd be great to have like a district page, you know, where if you were just the everyday Joe that wanted to argue and wanted to go on and see what's going on, you know, see, pull his checkbook out, what's going on in your local schools? If there's like one place you could go to and see fundraisers, you could buy tickets for. But I know a lot of us just go straight to PEF. But the grants they give are limited to certain things. You know, if you wanted to help out HOSA, you know, Petaluma High, or you wanted to help out the Hatchery or. Ten Thousand Degrees. Or Ten Thousand, like, if you really need to have one place you could go to and we could drag people to. And you can, oh my gosh, I, my neighbor's kid goes to Valley Vista. Uh, what, when's their, what's this Viking Voyage thing? I don't know. It's probably a lot of work, but maybe if it was a work in progress, eventually it would kind of take a life where people could go and they could, you know. We have such an overwhelming, overwhelmingly generous community that, I mean, look, I would go through myself. And it was just every couple of months, I'm gonna pick ten charities and donate ten dollars. That's ten more dollars and they're getting it now.
Well, there's no reason why we can't host a, a, a spot that people could, teachers or programs and schools could, could go on and, and place information. This is about our program. We're raising money for this. If you're interested, here's where you, where you can go to donate.
Kind of like a GoFundMe page for these.
Yeah, we would just post the information so that if someone wanted to look, yeah, so let's, we'll, let's look at that. You know, I think that the, I think the.
Yeah, it's another thing.
To me, the takeaway, and, and somebody was asking me about, um, I was meeting with a local official on, um, they asked, what are some things that we, that would be good to know about the school district? And I, and I said, you know, there's so much pockets of excellence that are out there. And, you know, I, I hope that people are watching this tonight to see what kinda energy that is coming from staff and students. And these are game-changing types of, we, we heard two thi- two things tonight that are changing kids' lives.
Right.
And, um, the credit for that goes to all those people that are putting the energy into that. And I remember when Eric, four years ago, one of the first meetings I came to, Eric and Scott did a presentation on Jump Start.
I remember that.
And I sat in the audience during that and to see how far it's come in that amount of time is credit to, to Eric and Scott and everybody that dug in and did, and doing the work day in, day out. So, uh, kudos to everybody.
I mean, the enthusiasm and passion is what really, I mean, that's what kids respond to.
Yep. You know, when you see the infectious, you know, nature from Linda and from staff, you know, the kids feed on that stuff.
It's great. Well, and it's too, I mean, I think because it's campaign season, we're, you know, a few of us are highly aware of, you know, people, as much as we try, it, it's really hard to spotlight some of the amazing things that we're doing and to be on top of it all and share it all, you know? Like, I, I don't know if I would've thought to share with folks about these two things tonight, but how amazing was that to sit through those two presentations? That was great. That was amazing. We're doing amazing things here, you know?
So I'll, and I'll just add, you know, the, in the state over the last, I don't know, eight to ten years, the pendulum swung really hard to A through G, four-year college for all.
Right.
And both of these, one was CTE, uh, one was junior college, you know? So it's how are we preparing all kids for all the opportunities, right? I mean, not everyone is gonna be A through G, four-year ready or wants to. So, you know, in that pendulum swing, we still have folks who realized there was a need for kids to be prepared for a post-secondary option, whatever they were. I mean, that number was staggering alone, just thirteen hundred kids.
You know, i- it's so interesting, um, meeting people that will say to you, well, I'm not college educated like you are. Okay, but you're a mechanic in the city of Ferrari making a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Like, love you or the. We've got, we've got to kind of, yeah, we've got to, we've got to kinda change. We've got to work on our society a little bit. And it starts with people and kids like this and, and that, just that, my parents, for me, they didn't talk about options or careers. It was just go to college, just go to college. And that was gonna be the fantasy. Everybody went to college, you were gonna be successful. And so I'm, I'm glad that, that, that we're pushing, you know, college and/or career ready because there's so many things and so many ways to get to where you need to be. But if we don't open the door of opportunities for people and for kids, you know, they won't see that. So I love that, that, that the first folks, that they were working so hard to get people to see that, I mean, San, if junior college produced two attorneys right here, one hopefully will be successful someday and one is very successful, but, you know, started at junior college, a parent that they would go to college, so.
One of the things I think we're gonna see in a future trend is these bigger companies like Google, Yahoo, Microsoft, reaching out and grabbing kids right out of high school. And they're, they're already making inroads that way and bringing them in. And if a, if a student is really focused and wants to, so it's another avenue to that career college, uh, ready. There's another component that's gonna be coming in that, that these kids are gonna be able to take advantage of. And think about it, they're paying you fifty thousand dollars a year, let's say, for four years to get you up to snuff, instead of you paying fifty thousand dollars here to get the snuff.
Well, and it's also these programs like the IG program at Valley Vista or that program at Kennelworth that is giving the kids those qualities that businesses want. Okay, we'll take you out of high school, but you're already, you know, responsible and self-starter. And, and so it, it definitely starts at the elementary level, you know, where you, you give those kids the qualities that are gonna make them successful, no matter what they choose to do.
They're gonna have lots of options, which is always really.
I'd hire V C tomorrow, that's a sure.
No, that's the idea. You want impressive candidates and, and we've seen it. I've seen it in the graduates when you shake their hands. I've seen a real attitude shift as far as these kids are, are getting it. I mean, they look in the eye, shake your hand. There are, just their presentation, I, I, just in my short time of working here, I've seen a real stepping up of their game too. And, you know, that comes from everybody kind of, you know, helping them along that path of, of how to present and get ready because they're launching.
So at, at a future board meeting, I think it's the next board meeting, I'll bring a presentation on our, um, our latest state test results. In December, we'll come back with the, the full dashboard, which has all the metrics. And one of the things that's great is the state is now valuing the College Career Indicator in a much more broad way. So it's not just.
A through G.
A through G. It also is participation CTE, participation in doing enrollment at the college. So it, it puts.
So, it puts more of a value on all of these different ways that people can be ready for post-secondary, not just one. Even though, you know, we still want to try to improve those as best we can, but also provide for all kids. So, I did want to add, I sent down a little lane to Phoebe, because then she was gonna ask. So, Pedal Mahai has 70 kids, about 70 here that are in the Jump Start. But it all started with Casa. There's five high schools in the county that partner with SRJC, so.
So, does Pedal Mahai, they don't have, as a program, or they're working on it, they're building it?
Right, I mean, if you look, they're kind of like where Casa was, two years ago.
I mean, they don't have...
And is 10,000 degrees there as well?
No.
She's kind of the boss, right?
Is there, is it Hugo that's there?
Different.
But you said they were there early in two months, you've already had exposure.
Oh, yeah. We've had 10,000 degrees out there for a long time, and I was a mentor for a couple of kids. It's an amazing program. I just...
And I think a nice shout-out to Santa Rosa Junior College, which is a valuable institution that we're very fortunate to have in our town. And just reading in the newspaper, Chronicle, earlier this week about the CSU system, where kids are graduating, it's taking them six years, you're paying your tuition, and a lot of freshmen, I didn't even realize, are taking math that's meaningless, remedial math. You're not even getting your college credit, and in the English courses. So, it's fascinating. You're paying your full tuition as a freshman, but he's taking you six years. The graduation rate after four years is like 19% of CSU. The average is six years. So, we might as well go to Santa Rosa Junior College for almost, you know, free, if you get a Doyle Scholarship or any, you know, for two years, and then, so.
I could go back to college, I'd stay there for eight years.
The choice.
Not if I was having to pay myself, though.
Like, that was fascinating to me, that if the CSU's...
Still set at B.
I was paying.
Okay.
Can I just throw something else, that I thought was really interesting?
Just a little bit like...
Then the state of Maine said that if their graduates, okay, students that, you know, graduated from high school in Maine, went to college somewhere else, if they came back to the state of Maine to work there, they would pay their college debt.
Wow.
Isn't that amazing that they, you know, the state, well, I mean...
So, we needed with Maine.
Right?
Oregon does that, too. If you, certain jobs, they will, yeah, yeah, they make those appear on your student notes, absolutely.
That's incredible. That is incredible. Okay, item nine, comments from the public scene. Item 10, report on activities and correspondence to school board members. Let's see, we had site visits at San Antonio, Crossroads, Live Oak, Casa, Valley Vista, and Kennelworth. And Phoebe and I attended Lin Williams's Women in Politics forum last night, which was quite fun. Michael's in the show, but that's all right.
No, no, no boys, no boys were allowed.
That's not true, they were the audience. All right, item 11, approval of consent agenda by Consolidated Division. 11.1 Administration Human Resources, 11.1, wait, sorry, sorry, I just started going right through like it's the action.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor? Here we go, 12, Act 9, it's 12.1 Administration Human Resources. 12.1.1 Resolution 1819-11, Resolution of the Board of Education, of the Pedal Mahai City Elementary and Pedal Mahai Joint Unit High School District, of the County of Panama, City of California, 2018, red, we're in week. So moved.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? Salvo's inventory. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was, what's funny last night, as they went through five people that were running for school board, I think everybody listed the title of trustees, like, it just reminded me, because it's so long. 12.2 Business Services, 12.2.1 Purchase Orders.
So moved.
Second.
Any issues with the purchase orders? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 12.2.2 Validification of War Register for Warrants Issued September 1st, 2018, September 30th, 2018, by Pedal Mahai City Schools.
So moved.
Second. I have to recuse myself.
All right. Two, you're out? You're not out, you were just nodding for him.
No, I was just on the mic, just to make sure he was ready.
So, the two of them are out, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 13, Discussion Information Only Items, 13.1 Administration Human Resources. 13.1.1 A Williams Settlement for the Uniform Complaint Report, July 1st, September 30th, 2018. Any comments or questions? 13.1.2 Amendment Board Policy, First Reading for Board Policy, 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures.
Just for clarification, these are updates that we received from CSBA, and they, whatever adjustments we go here.
Yeah, we don't, you know, all of the readings for the first reading of the board policy are changes that they have made to the policy. We haven't made any adjustments to that, so they're standard changes.
13.1.3 Amendment Board Policy, First Reading for Board Policy, 419.11, 4219.11, 4319.11, Sexual Harassment.
So, on this particular item, I had a couple of questions regarding some of the strike-throughs. One was related to, why was disciplinary action struck through? And it appears, looking at it, it's because they added disciplinary action above under, let's see if I can find it. Maybe Dave knows where that is. Let me give you a second to dig through it.
Yeah, it's any district employee, it's like the fourth paragraph. Fourth paragraph down. And then it follows with, let's see.
But we'll double-check, we'll double-check with CSBA to make sure that it's because it's a redundancy. If it's not, I'll let you know. But when they do that, it's, they try to clean up the language.
I also think that we need to include the titles of the district coordinators. So, there's, Dave does it for students, and he does it for teachers and employees, but they won't always be doing it, so maybe it needs to be, it's, you know, you know, have student services, so that it's just in there, it's very clear to whoever reads it, that they know who they should go talk to if they need to.
I think we've, I think we've had some discussion about, because it's interesting when you hear questions, you know, from someone that's new to the board, or from someone that's asking from outside, how to negotiate through the board policies and the ARs, and what exactly that means, and how they work together, and if they work together. And Matthew, we were talking a little bit about when these come through, particularly on, not that all of our VPs and ARs aren't important, but, you know, sexual harassment is a big one. I know Ellen had a ton of questions, Phoebe had some comments, I think she had with Gary. I think maybe we should look at beefing up a little bit what the board gets in the rationale and situation section when we prep something. Particularly if you see something like the retaliation paragraph that's completely struck through, maybe we need a little more here on why that was, or to flip over and look, like you did mention the AR 4030, maybe just beef it, since we know your background, and you have lawyering skills as well as educating principled, you know, research skills. So, I think they talked to Gary with some of the issues that they had, and maybe he can talk to you about that more. But sometimes they come through, and if it's something, it's like kind of a hot topic, or it's something we feel really important, we make sure that the board members really understand, and that the public can access it probably easier.
Well, you're gonna start to see a lot of board policies coming through, and what's gonna happen also is, if you saw, there was just massive influx from the governor at the last minute, new education laws, what you received in your board back, and all of that is going to lead to changes in our, subtle changes in our board policies. So, what'll happen is, the next quarter, CSBA will be sending those revisions out, so those will kind of get piecemealed and sent.
And, you know, that wouldn't mean be bad on that, like you talked about on that district webpage, versus board policies and visiting regulations. Beefing that up to what that means, what are board policies, what are the ARs, do they interact, why?
Just make it more user-friendly.
Yeah, and then, and maybe even mentioning that, yeah, even mentioning that, like, you know, we get our updates from CSBA that fits them legally when there are changes in the law, so people know that we have a function of government that's helping us negotiate when there are changes in laws, and that's why we update things.
Or dictating to us.
Or dictating to us, so we stay legal.
What, Gary, how does, what does CSBA stand for, what's the relationship, the, you know?
It's always, it's always that balance, right? Too much information that you overload people, but then you can help the layperson, because you do kind of get used to, you know, education speak or acronyms or whatever, and then it isn't sometimes till somebody on the outside looks in that and doesn't understand that you realize.
And especially something like sexual harassment, which is just such a huge, major issue, it should be user-friendly. People should be able to go to the website and understand what our policies are, some, most dictated legally by the state. But, you know, it's not always...
Yeah, no, good point.
Yeah, I don't think that unless you're in education, you realize that the administrative regulations will look different from district to district, but you can go on our board policies and you could throw them up against somebody in Riverside, and they're gonna see almost identically the same thing, because we're both just using CSBA. But it is an issue as far as transparency. I think giving a little bit of information about what the difference is between AR and BP, who's CSBA, we can add all that and stuff to the website and do that.
I think, yeah, I'll talk it to death. Cool. Thank you for both of you, I know you talked to Gary. 3.2 Business Services, 3.2.1 New Board Policy, First Reading for Board Policy, 3238 Federal Grant Funds.
Yeah, just that, I'm getting there to it. We, this is, I believe, a new, a new policy that we're adding. We needed to add it.
Hold on one second, I skipped, I slipped my cursor, I skipped the one before that. Did anybody have any questions on the first reading of the pre-retirement part-time employment? My apologies for skipping over that. Okay, back to you, Gary.
Yeah, just so we needed to add, we needed to add a policy on this, and it's, we're out of the CSBA template, and it's just good practice to have one about that grant funds get audited, and that we're mandated to follow certain procurement procedures. It's just that we've never had one, and we were looking at doing some postings on some potential federal grants, and we want to make it. And I'm not sure why there's never been one, but we're adding it.
13.3 Educational Services, 13.3.1 First Reading of Pedal Mahai Joint Unit High School District Courses, CTE, Anatomy and Physiology. Any questions or comments on that one?
They look really good. So, Phoebe noticed, I don't know if no one else noticed, Phoebe noticed the date on the top of the form, so it's 2016-17, because it was submitted three years ago, and...
And it's now getting a process now?
Somewhere in the process, it never made it here. So, last year, as we were looking at our CTE pathways, so this is the capstone course for Linda's pathway. So, this is, so in a public and community health career pathway, this is a thorough. So, there's bio-community health, chemistry and community health, and the CTE physiology and anatomy. So, when we were looking at her course in the system, I was trying to figure out, how does she distinguish which kids are the CTE ones and which ones aren't, because the course just says physiology and anatomy. So, she said, "Oh, I submitted a course a couple of years ago," and I said, "You don't have it, it's not in the system." So, somewhere, somewhere a couple of years ago, so she resubmitted, that's what that is. So, that already went to Pedal Mahai, Principal's Advisory Council and everything, saw all the old dates on it.
And they're in offer again.
Well, not officially, but...
It sounds like a great class.
So, now we're making it official, they'll have the full pathway, the full capstone, the real course.
All right. 13.3.2 First Reading of Pedal Mahai Joint Unit High School District Courses for Pedal Mahai Honors, Principal of Engineering.
All right, so this course already exists as a non-honors course, and now it uses a way it also recognizes, if you teach certain elements, that it can be also counted as a weighted honors course. So, this is the weighted version, so students can take both of these courses, one first, obviously honors one second, and get weighted credit. So, this is, so the students take the honors version.
Can students take the honors course but not have it be an honors, I mean, can they take it as just a regular course? And is there added work to get the honors, or is it just an honors course period?
So, two different courses. So, there's Principal's Engineering, EOE, which is not weighted, not honors, regular course.
Is that a CTE, the non-honors one?
It's, it should be a CTE, but the teacher teaching it does not have a CTE credential. That's one of the things we're trying to coax personally, too, while we still have federal grant funds to help everybody.
Are they thinking about it?
Yes.
What does that entail to get the credential?
It usually entails some industry experience in cataloging that and/or some work with SCOW, so, but, so we're working on that. So, the honors piece, yeah, so it's, it's a template course from Project Need the Way, PLTW, it's a CTE kind of organization. And there are elements that if they teach them, if they include them, those are the honors pieces, and that's what's weighted. So, this is a distinguishing factor from the other one. The kids who do these added elements get the honors weighted. Does that make sense?
Kind of, so if they want to take both classes, and they don't want to do the honors work, can they still take that class?
They can take the first one.
But not the second one. So, the second one is pure honors.
The second one is embedded.
It's embedded, okay, so it's not an option, because I know sometimes, you know, you can add an honors piece to a regular class if you don't have enough students.
No, two separate courses.
Small school mentality. Are they like full classes?
Well, I think there's three total sections.
Sections, oh, that's good, yeah.
All right, feature business, Gary, adding 14.
We'll bring back, we'll bring back overview on district goals.
And can we continue the sexual harassment discussion?
Yeah, that's coming back.
Okay, good.
We're gonna sign papers now, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
All right.